Now, we can start? You sure? Good evening all. I'd like to welcome you to the village council meeting of Monday, March 27, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Commissioner Milovich Walters.
Present.
Commissioner Polk.
Present.
Commissioner Reed. And Mayor Mahoney.
Here.
Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am so happy I can say, will the clerk call the roll? The clerk manager. Welcome back. Very good to have you.
Absolutely.
So, the first item on our agenda is the presentation of the Payless Park Women's Club.
We'll go to the minutes. Sorry, you got so excited.
I'm very excited. You have a draft of the minutes from our previous meeting in your packet. Any comments, questions, suggested changes? If not, I would seek a motion for approval.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Second.
Hearing a motion in multiple seconds.
Yes, Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. The first item under recognition, proclamations, appointments, and presentations is the presentation of the Payless Park Women's Club 120th Anniversary Plaque to be displayed at the Capter Administrative Center. Who's going to make this presentation? Sue, the president of the Women's Club, would you like to come up?
Well, hope. Okay. How's that? Is that better? So, we thought we were coming here to actually request to be able to hang our plaque here, but Rick informed me, as did others, that we don't need to make a request. We are going to, we need to say thank you. We are going to be able to hang our plaque here in the entryway to the Village Hall. I just want to make a few remarks about it, and I want to talk a little bit about our club and then a little bit about the plaque. I know the council knows, but maybe I have a much bigger crowd than I've talked to in one of these meetings before. Maybe everyone doesn't know, last year was our 120th anniversary. So, our club started in 1902, and we did a lot of celebrating in 2022. And one thing we did was this plaque. That was really the final celebration that we did. Our club is one of the oldest women's clubs in Illinois, and I think one of the most unique. I feel we are a group of very caring women that care about the community and care about each other. And I think there's a lot of women's clubs that do a lot of community work, but in the years I've been in the club, I'm especially proud of the kinds of friendships that we build with each other, the fun we have doing the projects that we do. And I guess I just consider that unique compared to, there's a lot of clubs that do a lot of good things, but we have a lot of fun while we're doing it as well. I can see a number of members smiling about that. I just want to go over a couple of facts with you about the club that, there's quite a history written when you're 120 years old. Our first meeting was at, or the first organizational meeting was the president, and her name was Martha Margaret Coleman. And she lived at 190, 126th Street and 9th Avenue. And that is the home today of Mary Ann Hammond, who's sitting right up here in the corner. She's been a club member for 16 years. Her mother was a long time, her mother was a longtime club member. I'm used to the podium in front of me. Her mother was a longtime club member and also a president of the club. So, we've held a number of things at Mary Ann's house because that's very special to us. That was the organizational meeting. The actual first meeting was held in someone else's home, which is now the Plush Horse. So, we tie into a lot of things that went on in the Payless community. By November of 1902, the meetings had moved to the clubhouse of the Improvement Club. Now, anyone who's read the history of Payless Park knows about the Improvement Club. And the Improvement Club is actually where the REC Hall is today. And that's where, that's where they met when they first started. That's where we meet today in the REC Hall. We hold our monthly meetings. In 1902, bonds were issued by the Improvement Club, and the Women's Club was the first group to purchase bonds. We bought 10 bonds for $50. And those bonds were later canceled in lieu of rent for the Women's Club to use the Improvement Club. So, hopefully you won't start charging us rent. But anyway, so we were the first club to buy bonds. The club's first benefit that was held was a card party that they had, of course, at the Improvement Club. It was in December of 1902, and they made $18. We now have a buncle party at the so-called Improvement Club, the Recreation Hall in December, and last year we made $1,000. So, things have changed. Not gambling, playing buncle, but a big raffle that we had through the buncle game. The club's first initiatives were passing the child labor law, suffrage, getting women's a right to vote, and getting Payless Park Incorporated. The mayor and I were just talking about which came first. And we actually came first, and our club worked hard at getting Payless Park Incorporated. But I think it's especially important to talk about the suffrage issue. The club actually traveled to Springfield in 1913, so this was about 10 years after we started, after the club started. And they were part of getting limited voting rights for women in Illinois, almost 12 years before there were national voting rights for women. The club then held training sessions for all voting women in the township to explain the law, and the quote in the history was, "To teach us how to cast a vote without getting thrown out at the polling place." So, we did training sessions for the entire township. And then the club had a speaker on the women's right to vote and a parade with a big banner on 123rd Street. So, we were a big part of that, and I'm very proud of that. We also played an instrumental role in forming the library. One member of the club left her personal estate to the club to sell off to be used to start the first library. The library was first housed again in the Improvement Club, and the proceeds from selling that estate were $312. Things do change, and it is a home that's, I think, still standing in Payless Park. Is that right, Sue? Is it still here? The Bartlett Home? I think it was Bartlett. Well, Mary Ann always knows the answers to these. Mary Ann is the historian of our club, and she doesn't record the history. She tells us what the history is. She can tell you anything about the history, so she would be the expert on that. Anyway, that $312 was used to buy books for the first library. In our last meeting, which was just last Thursday, we had Catherine from the library at the meeting, and we had just donated money for five new books for five deceased members in honor of those members. So, we're still, we're still very involved with the library. This year, you may have seen this in the email news, we delivered 200 Valentines to the Mantino Veterans Home. Each Valentine has $5 in it, and we've done this for a number of years. But it was interesting, someone went back and looked at the history and found that even in the 1950s, when that facility was the Mantino Mental Hospital, the club had a Christmas party there each year, and one year purchased 25 TVs for the patients. So, many of the things we do, we just continue to do them and maybe end up doing them differently. This year, we donated $8,000 in bedding, towels, sheets, and warm clothing to the South Suburban Crisis Center. We have been working closely with them for a number of years. Even longer, we've worked with the grade schools and the high schools on school supplies and scholarships. We donate over $5,000 in our immediate Payless Park community to the police, to the fire station, to the police cadets, to the library, to the center, to McCord, and so on, in the immediate Payless community. I'm very proud of what we have done today. There's one thing that I want to mention that most of our club members don't even know, but in the last year and a half, we have really worked on increasing the membership of our club. And previously, we were a club probably about middle size in the larger organization of the General Federation of Women's Clubs in Illinois. I was told last week that we are now the largest club in Illinois. And we are thrilled. In a community of 5,000, second largest club is Downers Grove, a much bigger community than we are. We are now the largest club at 153 members. And I have to thank Pat Bailey, she's our membership chairman, she's back here, who really, her brainstorming and then working with younger members to recruit a lot of the younger people that were moving into Payless Park has made such a difference in our club. Finally, that's our club. The plaque, which is back here, it's the result of our 120th celebration, and it was the idea of our treasurer and the co-chair of many celebration activities we did, Susan O'Keefe, if you'll raise your hand. Really, she should be talking about the plaque. We did the plaque in honor of our members. Members could buy an engraved plate for themselves, or they could buy a plate for others. The plaque has 144 plates, and we have 130 of them engraved. All of the 33 founding members are included in the first, I think, three rows or four rows of the plaque. And those plates were bought by other members in honor of those first 33 members. Most of our past 56 presidents also have plates, and those, again, were purchased by other members in the club, making sure that they were included on the plaque. One member actually bought 20 plates to be sure that past members which she knew, or past members which she knew about, would be honored on the plaque. So, it has a lot of meaning to us. That anniversary made us realize there is a huge history behind our club, and we are thrilled to be able to have it displayed, have it hang here in the lobby of the Village Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Payless Park Police Department Law Enforcement Explorers Cadet Scholarship Awards. Presentation to recipients, Jake Zungulus and Grace Mieschak.
So, the Women's Park recognizes the Payless Park Police Cadet Program, which are actually the Law Enforcement Explorers for their commitment and dedication. This dynamic program has two distinct components, education as well as training. Payless Park Officer Kevin Green oversees the program that offers youth between the ages of 14 and 20 who might be interested in community service, as well as a possible career in law enforcement, the opportunity to learn about policing and free society. This includes being a local officer, a state officer, or a federal officer. And as an aside, we have graduates that have gone on to multiple posts in all three of those areas. The Payless Park Police Cadet Program also provides young people experiences that allow them to mature and prepare them to become responsible and caring adults. Exploring is based on a unique and dynamic relationship between these individuals and the organization and their communities. The Police Explorer Post matches these individuals to activities in law enforcement and helps them grow, develop, and pursue their interests. Police, the Payless Park Police Cadet Program, say that three times fast, provides funding obtained from both residents and community organizations, as well as private businesses, to help our cadets support their college tuition as they pursue public service-focused degrees. Today, I'm proud to announce that we're awarding the Payless Park Police Department Cadet Scholarships to cadets Jake Zungulus and Grace Mieschak. There will also be smaller checks.
It doesn't have the white little markos on it.
Yeah. So, and besides that, walking into a bank like that, eh, it's not exactly about public safety. So, again, I want you guys to thank cadets Zungulus and Mieschak. And floor is yours.
This is one of the best cadet programs in Illinois, I'd say anywhere. They give us so much support and so much training, and I never expected to be here, standing here with all the knowledge that I know. I started in the middle of the pandemic, so I was 17 years old. It was at a time when the world was completely turned upside down. As I think back on the interview, I was so anxious, and even the most basic questions I was overthinking because I thought this is such a big role and such a responsibility that I wanted to make sure that I was the best person for it, and I drew so much during this program. I've never thought that in a million years that I know this much about law enforcement and that I'd even have the chance to continue my studies while having the backing of the Police Department. My three years as a cadet has provided me with invaluable education, and I want to thank my commander, my chief, the officers, and my predecessors for being one of the best, the amazing teachers that I could ever ask for. Commitment and willingness to take in new information are two qualities that are absolutely necessary to, on the path to becoming a cadet. Due to the way the program is structured, it is up to you to decide what the information that you want to receive and what you want to take out of this. Since I like being put to the test, whenever I went to cadets, I would make a point to ask as many questions and volunteer for pretty much everything. It helped my confidence, and I was prepared to handle critical situations in the future. They taught me how to manage high-pressure situations while keeping my cool, while still being vigilant. I consider it a good fortune to have joined and continued working for this department. Also, establishing strong relations to the local community was encouraged by the program. My entire life, I've been in Payless Park, and as a result, I've had the opportunity to work with various events, assist with regulation of traffic, and even provide a helping hand to a neighbor who is in need. To be in touch with the program and the people who live in Payless Park enables me to learn about their priorities and the areas in which they would like to see progress. When I am able to assist in the department, in any, I'd love to assist in any manner that I can, it brings me a tremendous deal of personal gratification. Every new piece of knowledge that I acquire brings me one step closer to achieving my goal of earning a degree in criminal justice. My journey from being a young woman who had a passion for law to the beginning of the year in 2020 as a cadet, and then eventually training to become a community service officer has prepared me in more ways than one for my future degree and has set me on the path that will allow me to fulfill my passion for assisting other people. Thank you so much.
Go ahead. Your man will hold your check.
Wow, that's a really tough speech to go out in the follow-up. Tied up here. I like to start off by saying how grateful I am, not only for the public service office and fellow cadets that I have the pleasure in leading, but also for amazing leadership by Chief Miller over there and Commissioner Dan Polk. I think they definitely deserve a round of applause. I first joined the program a little under four years ago when I was 14 years old. I've progressed so much through the program, and I am so grateful for all these opportunities that I can face, whether it's training, knowledge, hands-on experience, whether I'm out sitting in this very room during cadet meetings, learning some more knowledge, getting some hands-on training on traffic stops, handcuffing, resisting subjects, whether I'm out in the streets conducting well-being checks, checking on our very own Payless Park residents, and making sure everything is going safe in the village. Due to this program, there's no doubts in my mind I'm going to continue to pursue a career in law enforcement, and I like to keep things short, sweet, simple, to the point. So, I'm going to end my speech there just by saying thank you guys very much.
So, did they warn you about the final test?
Apparently not.
Where are you going to spend the 500 bucks? Don't tell me it's flush.
Okay, move a second answer. It's going to be for summer school at Marin Valley so I can complete criminal justice degree sooner rather than later.
Second question for you guys?
I'll try to keep my answer short this time.
Is it written down?
I'd love to continue taking classes at Marin and get my gen ed a little bit faster.
Excellent. Chief Carol Miller, this is your baby. Anything else you want to add?
Nothing, they keep them covered.
Thank you for your time.
They sure do. Very polished young men and women.
The village giveth and it taketh away.
It's great to have a reminder of why I do this job. Recreational Advisory Committee Commission Appointment. We have an individual who has expressed interest in fulfilling the Recreation Advisory Committee for a term to expire on June 1, 2026. Do you want me to go through the whole? Colleen Smith-Castello, she and her family moved here a year ago and enjoys all that Payless Park has to offer. In addition to her personal identity and experiences, Colleen values others in the community and would ensure that those perspectives are recognized and elevated in programming. Professionally, Colleen's work sits at the intersection of business, education, and community engagement impact. Colleen is confident that serving on the REC Advisory Board will allow her to use those professional skills to support and further the great work the board has done to this point. I'd like to have a motion to appoint Colleen Smith-Castello to the REC Advisory Committee to fill a vacancy with a term to expire June 1, 2026.
I wholeheartedly make this motion. She's fabulous. I met with her, and she's very excited to participate, and I think she'll be a great addition to my REC Board.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Milovich Walters.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Absolutely.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. This next item on our agenda is to proclaim March 27, 2023, as Monarch Pledge Day of the Village of Payless Park. I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, whereas both the Western and Eastern monarch populations have seen significant declines with less than 1% of the Western monarch population remaining, while the Eastern population has fallen by as much as 90%. Whereas the Village of Payless Park recognizes that human health ultimately depends on well-functioning ecosystems and that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife, whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and the Village of Payless Park is striving to become a leader. Whereas on March 20, 2023, I, John Mahoney, signed the National Wildlife Federation Mayor's Monarch Pledge and have officially committed to taking meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly, whereas the Village of Payless Park is committed to issue a proclamation to raise awareness about the decline of the monarch butterfly and the species' need for habitat, host, or support, a native seed or plant sale, giveaway, or swap, launch, or maintain a public communications effort to encourage residents to plant monarch gardens at their home or in their neighborhood. And whereas every resident of the Village of Payless Park can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship, and whereas the Village of Payless Park is committed to sharing information with residents in a variety of ways to encourage monarch conservation, not conversation. Therefore, I, John Mahoney, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the Village of Payless Park, do hereby proclaim March 27, 2023, as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the Village of Payless Park, and encourage all residents to participate in the community activities that support and celebrate monarch conservation. Okay, I got another proclamation, which I will read regarding Arbor Day. Okay, proclaiming Arbor Day in the Village of Payless Park, really testing my vocal cords here. The Village of Payless Park recognizes that its trees are priceless resources to the community, and is, whereas it is the responsibility of the Village of Payless Park to encourage the preservation, planting, nurture, and care of trees, whereas it is also the responsibility of the Village of Payless Park to provide the opportunity for educational assistance regarding trees and to maintain the integrity of the native woods of the Village of Payless Park. Whereas further and promote the above goals, the Village of Payless Park continues to support the Tree Body Committee of the Village that works to attain these goals, whereas through the diligent effort of the members of the Tree Body, Payless Park Garden Guild One, and the Public Works Department, the Village of Payless Park did achieve the designation of Tree City USA. And whereas in the auspices of the Payless Park Tree Body and the Payless Park Garden Guild One, the Village of Payless Park will celebrate its 31st Annual Arbor Day in the park program on Sunday, May 7, 2023. 2023. Now, therefore, to recognize those achievements, be resolved that the Village of Payless Park hereby proclaim Sunday, May 7, 2023, to be Arbor Day in the Village of Payless Park, and that it be observed with an educational program presented by Trinity Pierce, stewardship manager of the Chicago Region Trees Initiative, from the Martin Orbiterum at the center in Payless Park. That will be a great program. Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are routine or have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. Item A, to approve payment of invoices on the warrant list dated March 27, 2023, in the amount of $47,938.29. That's the only item. So, I would seek a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich Walters.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. Old business, any items of old business to be brought before the council at this time? Then I'll go directly to information updates. Public Works and Streets Recreation Report, Commissioner Milovich Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I only have announcements, so I get the fun stuff again. But I'm going to go back to the Arbor Day and mention that there is a poster contest. So, it's ages from four to 12, and ages four and five are their own age groups, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 through 12. Get $25 if you make the poster and you win. And let me tell you, there aren't a lot of entries usually. So, 11 by 17 piece of paper, you can use crayons, markers, colored pencils. Just make sure you actually put the name of the child and their age and their phone number. If for some reason you are not at the Arbor Day Festival, you may still win. If for some reason you are not at the Arbor Day Festival, you may still win. So you can turn those in up until May 4th, right here at the Capter Center. Next is Brunch with the Bunny is full, so we're very excited. It'll be this Saturday, April 1st, so unfortunately, nobody else can sign up, but you'll have to do it next year quickly. As a reminder, all day of activities includes brunch, the egg hunt, and other activities. And again, no showing up on the day of, sorry. But I'm so glad it's a success, and our next event you can catch us at is our Spring Fishing Derby, April 8th. It's at Papoose Lake Forest Preserve, and registration begins at 8:00 AM. Now you can show up that day of the day of and sign up, and you start fishing at 8:30. Youth tennis will be starting up, so don't forget. It is going to be available for ages four through 12, and it starts April 13th with Coach Mike, who is a United States Professional Tennis Association Certified Instructor with years of experience at numerous clubs in the Chicagoland area, including Huntington Estates Bath and Tennis Club in Naperville, and Courts Plus in Elmhurst. So please sign up. That starts again April 13th, ends for ages all the way from four to 12, and I promise the 12-year-olds won't be playing with the 4-year-olds. And lastly, our soccer program, we decided to add a 9- to 12-year-old program, and this starts April 24th. It's called Score More Goals. Soccer Academy is led by Coach Dean, a top A licensed coach both here in the U.S. and back home in England. Coach Dean is excited to offer quality programming to build off the 2- to 8-year-old program of soccer shots that we currently provide for our youth. Coach Dean brings 20-plus years of experience working with youth in both countries in top-tier programs such as the English Premier's League Youth Academy for Arsenal and Women's Soccer Team for Northwestern University. So that's pretty exciting. Of course, now maybe we'll have to call it football because he's English, but I don't know. Anyway, that one starts April 24th. So if you've got a 9- to 12-year-old that wants to get a little more experience with football, sign them up. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Building and Public Property Report, Michael, Commissioner Michael Wade.
Thanks, Mayor. Real quick, high grass and weeds. The Building Department has been working hard lately to make sure that lawns are being cut and maintained. Please keep your lawns maintained. Chapter 692, spot 02 of the Village Code requires property owners to cut high grass and weeds on their property. Grass and weeds cannot exceed eight inches in height. If you are aware of a property that has become overgrown, please call us at 708-671-3732. In the permits, the Building Department processed 13 permits from March 8th to March 22, resulting in $12,456.35, bringing our fiscal year-to-date to $164,240.86. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Public Health and Safety, Commissioner Dan Polk.
Thank you, Mayor John Mahoney. So we'll start with Police Activity Report from the 13th of March through the 26th of March of the year of 2023. Had 1,791 calls for service over that period of time, and additional 19 citizen assists, and 25 additional--
And 25 additional case reports, for those of you listening at home. Had eight accident reports. Fortunately arrested neither an adult or a juvenile, and there did not impound any vehicles. Made 65 traffic stops, issued 25 moving violations, an additional five adjudication tickets, and 32 speeding tickets. So that is what the Payless Park Police Department's been up for the last couple of-- up to for the last couple of weeks. And then I have a couple of quick announcements. The first involves the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, C-E-R-T. We have a second program that's kicking off on April 27th from 7:00 to 9:00 here at the Capter Center. We've successfully graduated our first group of citizens, Community Emergency Response Teams. They are organized as a neighborhood-based team. They receive special training to enhance the ability to recognize, respond to, and recover from a major emergency or disaster situation. As an organized team, these individuals can provide vital services in the absence of or while waiting for the arrival of emergency responders, and they also continue to assist once responders arrive. Payless Park Police Officer Frank Flores, who is a nationally recognized expert in emergency and disaster management, he could come and see my backyard. It looks like Lake Polk at this point. He oversees the program. If you're still interested in becoming, or you want more information on becoming a CERT member, you can contact him at 708-671-3770, or you can email him at frankfloriz, F-F-L-O-R-I-S, F-F-L-O-R-I-S, at paylesspark.org. I hear, I've been sitting in on some of those. I know that Commissioner Milovich-Walters has been sitting in some as well, perhaps at the behest of one of the participants. And the question that I hear most often when people ask me about information about the CERT program is, "I don't want to be traipsing through the woods at 3:00 in the morning looking for some drunk person." Or, "I, you know, can handle a fire extinguisher, but I'm not going when that building's burning down over there." I can assure you that, first of all, you're going to learn stuff that might be very useful for the community, but will certainly be useful for yourself, and your family, and your neighbors. So even if you don't want to be called out, you don't have to be called out, and you can participate at whatever level you want to participate in. And I can tell you that we've had people in their 20s be part of the first CERT group, and we've had people a bit older than that. I'll just leave it at that. I'm being kind, Marie. So again, there's very useful information, and it's quite possible you might learn something that would either help you or help your family without ever needing to be called out for an emergency. The other thing is that you'd be surprised about what kinds of helpful things you can do in an emergency that will offload a first responder, or an officer, or a village employee to be able to actually directly respond. So one of the first things that happens in an emergency, we live in a village where people help each other. People start showing up at the Capter Center, and they say, "What can I do?" Or they bring a case of water, and they say, "Where should I put this?" If you're able to sit in a chair behind a table and point, you could be a very useful resource in that kind of issue. Because if you're not there, I have to designate someone who's probably a little bit better trained than all of that to be able to do that. So again, if you're at all interested in the CERT program, you don't need to be a resident of the Village of Payless Park to participate. We like our residents to participate, but it's not exclusive. Again, you can reach out to Frank at F-F-L-O-R-I-S, F-F-L-O-R-I-S, at paylesspark.org. So that was kind of long-winded, but it's a great program, and I can guarantee you, you're going to be useful at the end of it. It's spring. Today looked a little bit better like spring. Some of my bulbs have finally flowered. I'm pretty excited. My daffodils, eh, they got buds, but I don't have any daffodils yet. I only have about 30,000 daffodils in my yard. It's true. But here's another harbinger of spring. It's bike safety. So what makes a great biking venue, biking trails, and an abundance of stunning places to ride? Safety. So every year, for a long time now, we've been giving out free helmets to local children as part of the National Children and Safety Program. So why is it important to wear a bike helmet? All bike riders should wear bike helmets. Each year, about 800 bicycles are killed, and another half a million end up in hospital emergency rooms. About two-thirds of the deaths and about a third of injuries involve the head. Wearing a helmet can reduce the risk of head injury by as much as 85%. So these are available at no cost to the residents, no cost to the residents for their grandchildren, no cost to the residents for their children. And we just asked that you would come to the station at the Capter Center during normal business hours, and we'll be happy to fit a child, or we'll be happy to give you a helmet. If you can guess your child's helmet size, we'd be also happy to give you one without needing that child to be present. So again, great program, supported by the community, also by the Payless Park Police Department, but there'll be free bike helmets at least through the spring and for as long as supplies last, so come early and get your helmet. Get two, get three.
We've been doing the bike helmet program for a long time. I remember Mary O'Connor modeling those for everyone on my behalf when I was Police Commissioner.
I can't help you. I just, I just have the, I have the Van Wild thing.
I could age my child, but it's been at least 20 years.
We did not reveal anyone's ages during this meeting. Chief Miller? First of all, thank you for your service. Second of all, is there anything you'd care to add? Thank you for your efforts on our behalf. And that, Mermoni, concludes my report.
Excellent. A Council and Finances Report. Commissioner Reed is not available tonight, and there's no report on the finances. Mayor's Report, I do not have a report tonight. Clerk's Report. Marie Aragoni.
Welcome back. I have a couple of announcements to make. This Thursday, March 30th, the Secretary of State's Mobile Driver Facility will be here in the Village Hall from 10:00 to 2:00. The services provided are the renewal or correction of your driver's license, new correction of state ID, license plate renewal, voter registration, organ donor registration, and seniors 65 and over, no charge. Seniors age 75 and over must visit a permanent facility to renew their driver's license. And also, early voting is available at the Payless Heights Recreation Center, 6601 West 127th Street in Payless Heights until April 3rd. Election Day is April 4th. Polling places will be open from 6:00 AM and will remain open until 7:00 PM. Everything you need to know regarding voter information, including your voting location, can be found by visiting cookcountyclerk.gov/elections. And please note, your polling location is also on your voter's card. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Clerk Aragoni. Manager Payne, do you have anything this evening? Thank you. Announcements, I just have one announcement, again regarding the Monarch Pledge Day. Earlier this evening, we, I read a proclamation. This pledge is in support of the statewide initiative to conserve the breeding and feeding habitat of the monarch butterfly and other regional pollinators. My hope is that this initiative will continue to foster our culture of conservation that ensures a flourishing pollinator habitat. The village already has a pollinator garden in front of the Capter Center, at the pumping station on Southwest Highway, and at Centennial Park. Also, the Payless Park Library created a beautiful pollinator and monarchway stationed garden that contains milkweed plants. Monarch caterpillars only eat milkweed. The milkweed plant provides all the nourishment the monarch needs to transform into the adult butterfly. The village has free milkweed seeds available to residents here in the Capter Center lobby if you'd like to plant them and help conserve that habitat for the monarchs. And that's all for my announcements. Citizens and visitors, common period, anyone like to address the council? Again, I just remind people that this is a common period only and not a question and answer period.
Hi, my name's Phil Wegley. I live literally two doors up the street. For those of you who don't know, my wife and I, my wife Rita, late wife Rita and I, moved here in 1983. And if you can count your fingers and toes, that's 40 years ago. I say that just as background because I've been fortunate to see many mayors come and go. Lots of good mayors come and go. A very close friend of mine, Jim Pavlantis, was a member of this council for many years. And I knew John Mahoney before, but through Jim, I became very close friends with John. John and I spend more time together than we want to admit. I came tonight, I'm not sure I've ever spoken at this council before, but I've been in leadership roles in the public sector. I was president of the school board, and I've been, I'm on the plan commission. I know what it's like to sit there and have to make tough decisions in the face of a lot of criticism. It's not easy. And the difference, no disrespect to the council members, the difference between being the president of something, or the mayor of something, is like huge compared to be a council member or a school board member. I mean, it's just like light-years difference. And John has done, in my opinion, absolutely fabulous job. John is a lot smarter than he looks. And I don't tell John this to his face, but John honestly is very, very bright. We're fortunate to have someone who can think through issues clearly and make reasoned judgments. Not rash decisions, but reasoned judgments. Very fortunate. I can't tell you how happy I am to have been a member of this community with John's leadership. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Adamo, for those who don't know me. And Phil, I've lived here 45 years. And as I was driving over here, it occurred to me that maybe I've now become one of the older people in the town. And I don't like to think that, but it might be true. So it's not often that you can get me out of my family room watching you on TV or not watching you, I hate to admit. But I wanted to come because I was here 20 years ago when John was first elected to the council and then became mayor. And I know that in a couple weeks, you'll have another meeting and you'll get a lot of accolades, but I wanted to be able to say thank you to you because this is a thankless job, to all the commissioners, this is a thankless job. I've served on a board. I was on your Historic Preservation Committee when it started. I've served in other volunteer positions in the community, not recently because I got But I know how hard it is, like Phil said. It's not an easy thing to do. You give up a lot of time, time away from your family, and it's not often that any of us come and say thank you. And I think that sometimes, once in a while, it's nice if some of us come and say thank you. It's a thankless job, but we appreciate you. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Allison Sternquist, and until maybe this weekend, almost nobody in this room knew who I was. Some of you probably, most of you probably still don't. I moved here, I live right down the street. I live down the creek from Moose Street, and down the street and down the creek from Moose, and I, until now, have never really used my voice. I've been buried in my kids and my job and just, I chose this place to live because of who we are, but I haven't been all that involved, but I've taken advantage of everything that this place is without giving back very much myself. And I realized recently that I needed to start paying attention, and I'm standing here tonight, I feel so much better because, and the people that I've met in the last, this weekend, have made me feel so much better because I was getting really, really worried about, who are we? What is this place? Like, I moved here to raise my children here, and what I've been seeing lately really, really scares me that we might lose this. And I want to, I also want to just say thank you, you know? We live in a place where, I didn't even realize that I was going through something, and I posted something on social media, and one of the police officers, seven years ago, stopped me on the street and said, "Just so you know, we're here for you." Like, he didn't know me. That's the police department we have. And, you know, my kid, my daughter would like to thank you for bringing Santa to town every year, writing him and asking him to come. My son would like to thank you for Autumn in the Park, and all the things that we do for this town, I hope we don't lose them, because this is a wonderful place, and it's nice to see the nice things being said right now. So, thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. And anyone else want to address the council?
Are you dying? I'm a little worried.
Why?
Well, usually, these are the kinds of things that are set at funerals and wakes.
We never know how much time we have left.
Exactly.
So be grateful, that's all I can say.
And we're grateful for all of you guys, too.
You know, listening to the presentation of the cadets just reminded me so much, it's been a difficult few months, of why we do this. The Cadet Program-- been a difficult few months, of why we do this. The cadet program was started in 1999 by Chief Joe Miller and former Police Commissioner Carolyn Baca, and it's been built. And just to watch these young men and women, they're so polished, and young people, and the gratefulness and the service mindset is incredible. It just makes me grateful. So I won't say anything more. So I will call for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Oh, yeah. Well, I'll second it.
I'm a little discombobulated.
The mayor can't actually second anything.
I've only been doing this for 16 years.
16 years.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
I think he just has to stay.
Commissioner Milovich-Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
And Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you all for coming tonight. It was a great meeting.